Okay. We'll call the Eastline Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Today is November fifteenth, halfway through the month already. If you all please rise for the Bledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you. Two of our members have commitments in their day jobs and couldn't be here this evening, but we do have a quorum. No? So, is there any additional agenda consent items to be added to the meeting tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. So, delegations. Anyone? Anyone like to speak? Mr. Rando.
Ron Rando, 194 Boston Post Road, Eastline. Good evening.
Evening.
First thing I want to talk about. I have so many things written down here, so give me a minute to find them. Well, let's see. The first thing I want to talk about is I heard through the grapevine today that Costco's not coming. Well, seems to be that I stood here two years ago and said the same thing, but... So, I'm going to ask Mr. Nickerson to do something for me. As you sat on the board of zoning board, when you, I think you were chairman when this thing came forward, and they wanted to build Costco, and I think there was an additional four stores that were supposed to be built. So, that's four or five stores there, and one across the street that somebody was trying to build. So, I would like you, Mr. Nickerson, to give me a figure some way down the road when you've got time to figure it out, of how much revenue and tax money the town lost out of these two projects. Because what I figure is Costco probably would have brought in a million dollars in taxes, and probably Jim's project over there would have been a hundred and, I don't know, a hundred thousand, maybe something like that. I'm not positive of the figures, but... And I don't have a figure on the other four stores, but I would like to give you to look at, go through this and give me an estimate of what the town of Eastline lost in tax revenue, which I think it's a pile of money, a lot of money to be exact. And I have a lady friend who really wanted Costco to come into town, and she called the home office a couple of years ago, and Costco told her that they weren't coming. So, all of a sudden now, they're not coming from what I hear. And I hear another thing this morning, that we just had a sewer water rate change, and now that the state wants to add a three-dollar tax onto the water bills, is that right? That's not bad. After we just had two rate changes in the last couple of years. And another thing I wanted to talk about was we had somebody fired. Ed Ball was fired for harassment to townspeople. Didn't see anything in the paper about that. Does anybody in the town know what happened? Not a damn thing in the paper about it, nothing. And then, one more item. Mr. Nickerson, this is for you. Mr. Furman has two businesses in town. His dad started his business at the Arco Station where the Shell Station is right now, raised all his kids in the town of Eastline. They went to Eastline schools, they paid Eastline taxes. You don't pay Eastline taxes on your business, and plus, you send your kids out of town to school, where you get up there and praise how good the Eastline school system is. If they're not good for your kids, how come they're not good, they're good for everybody Then one more item.
That's your question?
Huh?
That's your question?
No, that's not a question. I'm just giving it to you.
No, no, you had a question specifically.
No, I didn't have a question. I just said you send your kids out of town, and you don't pay Eastline taxes, like we all do.
Okay.
And another thing that we're going to have in this town, I think when you're through, Mr. Nickerson, is the biggest bonding debt in the history of the town.
Right.
By the time you're through with your projects. And I heard you quote that my political life is gone. Well, I'm telling you something right now. My political life is going to take a second come around, and I'm going to be watching you in the next two years, every step and everything you say. And Mr. Solano, did you ever read the retirement thing in this town of Eastline? I think you better read it, get a copy of it, because I have it right here. I'm not quite done yet. When I am, I will let you know. Another thing. You know, we just had a big go-around with state budgets, and the town's going to take a licking here and there. Well, if you read the current today, the first year of the budget, we're going to be $178 million in the red. The second year, we're going to be $150. Eight months to do a budget, and what do we come up with? Haven't heard much from Mr. Fermi on this. I tried to get a hold of him, but I guess he must have been busy. But if you need a copy of that, I can get it for you. But I'm still here, and I'm going to be here as long as I can walk and breathe. Nobody calls me a liar, because I don't lie. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Approval of the minutes.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of November 1, 2017, as submitted.
Any comments, changes, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
One abstention.
Awesome. Consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of November fifteenth, 2017, in the amount of $1,423.37.
Second.
The comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? It's no old business, we'll go to new business. To review and approval of the updated workplace harassment and workplace violence policies, designate an EEO grievance officer. We are always periodically reviewing different parts of our policies in town. We reviewed this one recently and found it to need an update, so we did just that. We had our labor attorney look things over and compare it to standard practices in the industry, because especially around harassment and especially what's going on in the world, Hollywood comes to mind, Alabama politics comes to mind, that we want to make sure that we're clear, concise, and have a good working policy in place. This was mailed out to the commission. Are there any questions?
I have a few.
Mr. O'Connell is here tonight, who reviewed this as well? I'm sorry, I...
I think we left that to the labor lawyer.
Yeah, we did leave that to labor lawyer. I'm sorry, you're here for the other event.
Okay. So, it's, the definition's been broadened. Anyone that serves the town or works for the town?
Correct.
Board of commission members?
Right.
Vendors. The only thing I'm not sure about is when I read the language, is it's understandable actions the town can take if somebody is employed here, but I don't know what the process would be if it's a commission member or someone from the public harassing commission members.
Well, we would have little leeway on commission members. We have a policy that sets up accepted protocol and accepted behavior, but we don't have leverage when it comes to someone who might sit on a commission and harass, other than, you know, if it's criminal or civic, there's an impeachable situation that would come. So, really, this is focused on employees, where we do have leverage and a responsibility.
Okay. Because the language brings it. Now, I know, like, my company's policy that the companies, so you could be harassed by people that work for you, you could also be harassed by customers, vendors, and stuff like that, and it's a company's responsibility to protect employees, is usually how it goes, because they necessarily can't control the behavior of the vendors or the customers, per se.
Right.
Just some food.
I hear you. So, it protects the town in that we are putting our policy out there to commission members as well. Yeah, we lacking the ability to penalize or remove someone necessarily, but it certainly removes our liability over the fact that we didn't communicate proper behavior. Any other questions?
That's all I got right now.
Okay. Unless, is no other question?
Oh, I do have one other question, just a clarification.
Yeah.
On C, the last page, decision after the letter as responded, and any investigation that may be warranted has been concluded, the town will make its final decision. Who is the town? Is that ultimately your authority? Is it...
Yes.
Okay.
Ultimately, the first selectmen's position is the town. On any disciplinary, you're talking about disciplinary?
Yeah.
On the last page.
Yeah, disciplinary, right.
Yeah, first selectmen. Any disciplinary comes to the first selectmen's office.
Okay.
We set the policy first selectmen and acts.
Right. That makes sense.
Carries it out. Yeah. Good question.
Move to approve the updated workplace harassment and workplace violation policies as submitted, and designate the human resources specialist as the EEO grievance officer.
Second.
We have a...
And we need to...
Yeah, and the...
We need to designate.
Did you designate?
Well, the human resources specialist.
Yeah, we don't name that, we put, we name the position.
We name the position, because that way, if we name somebody and they leave, or whatever.
Because that's a overflowing position. So, we do have a motion? Has that been seconded?
I seconded it.
Okay. Further comment?
You know, I had a couple grammatical things, but structurally, I don't have any questions.
I will, we can still clean that up after the fact, if it's grandma, grammar.
Choice of words.
Can always be cleaned up. And I'm surprised, because I usually get a very clean copy from Nick Relo.
No, it's just a couple...
Okay.
Choices of words, it might be different.
Yeah.
That's the attorney in Mr. Cunningham.
Attorney versus attorney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. Mr. O'Connell is here to, on the next item, review and approve the zoning commission's recommendation to opt out of the temporary health care structures. And I know you want to bring us up to speed on this, don't you? That's why you're here.
Yes, that's why I'm here, and I think if you refer to item 3B of your package, there's a set of information that will help you get to where we're here. And if we work from the back to the front, it will be a little bit easier.
Oh, my. Really?
On the back is an act adopted by the Connecticut legislature entitled "An Act Concerning Temporary Health Care Structures," Public Act 17-155. We'll only look at the first page and then jump right to the page while you're here. A temporary health care structure is basically a transportable residential structure that provides an environment in which a caregiver, that's a defined term, may provide care for mentally and physically impaired persons, that is also a defined term, that is primarily assembled at a location other than the site of installation, has one occupant who is mentally or physically impaired, is not larger than 500 square feet, is not placed on or attached to a permanent foundation, and complies with the applicable provisions of the State Building Code, Fire Safety Code, and Public Health Code. It can be placed on a lot and be in compliance with the side yards and setbacks as a matter of right under this statute, regardless of what a local zoning regulation says. But, the statute also gives a municipality an opportunity to opt out of this automatic zoning compliance if certain factors occur, and that is on page three of eight of your statute, subsection J. That's why we're here tonight. A municipality, by vote of its legislative body, which is the Board of Selectmen, may opt out of the provisions of this section and various other provisions regarding the temporary health care structures if, and now we're on the top of page four of eight, if four things happen. If the zoning commission first holds a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of the zoning statutes regarding the proposed opt-out, and if, number two, if the zoning commission affirmatively decides to opt out of the provisions of these sections within the period of time allowed, number three, states upon its records of the zoning commission the reasons for the decision, and number four, publishes a notice of that decision in a newspaper, then that recommendation comes to the legislative body of the town. Working forward in that package, you'll see that the zoning commission indeed held a public hearing, and indeed voted upon this, and indeed voted to affirmatively opt out and gave reasons in a resolution, which is in that package, and recommended to the Board of Selectmen that the town opt out of the automatic imposition of temporary health care structures in the town of Eastline. And it's worthwhile to look at that resolution, it's just at the very beginning of your package. And it recites that the Public Act creates a new accessory use titled "Temporary Health Care Structures," which would be a new use as of right, subject to limited permitting requirements, in any single-family residential zoning district, on a lot owned by a person with a qualifying mental or physical impairment, or that person's unpaid caregiver. And whereas the Act establishes a permitting and enforcement program that is generally applicable to all Connecticut municipalities, and bypasses the Eastline Zoning Commission's ordinary process for adopting regulations and approving applications. And whereas the Act allows municipalities to opt out, and whereas the Act provides an opportunity for abutting, no opportu, does not provide an opportunity for abutting landowners to be heard on a permit application. Somewhat odd, the Act requires that abutting landowners be given notice, but it does not provide that there, for any public hearing process at which that abutting landowner would be able to be heard. And also, and whereas the commission is concerned that the town lacks sufficient staff to comply with many of the procedural requirements of permitting and enforcement, and the commission is concerned that the fees which the Act allows for permitting enforcement may not be sufficient to cover the costs incurred by the town, and whereas the commission is concerned that the permitting and enforcement may require the town to become a custodian of confidential medical information, there has to be a certification that the people who are entitled to this are indeed disabled, as defined. Whereas if in the future, the commission considers that temporary health care structures are appropriate for Eastline, a regulation written by the zoning commission to address Eastline's circumstances would be more compatible with the town's plan of conservation and development, and would be capable of being administered within the staffing resources available to the commission, the zoning commission resolves to recommend that this board opt out of the provisions of Public Act 17-155, and I think you have a resolution available for that. That's the general outline. There was a public hearing before the zoning commission. It was generally felt that if, in concept, it is not overwhelming, a bad idea, but in actual practice, to put it together and work through the definitions, which are kind of murky and slippery to work through, with the staff that the commission has, and the enforcement problems that might occur over the course of time, the zoning commission felt if we do that, it would be better for the zoning commission to write its own regulation, rather than have this imposed upon or from the state level. And that is why we're here tonight with the zoning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Connell? Or if we can take a motion and then...
I'll put a resolution out, so we can discuss this. Move the following resolution. Whereas the Eastline Board of Selectmen has received and reviewed a resolution from the Eastline Zoning Commission titled "Resolution to Opt Out of the Requirements of Public Act 17-155," and whereas the commission's resolution recommends to the board that the town opt out of the requirements of Public Act 17-155 in accordance with the Act's opt-out provisions, and whereas the commission's resolution sets forth the reasons for its recommendation, and whereas the board, having reviewed the commission's reasons and recommendations, agrees with the commission's conclusion that opting out of the requirements of Public Act 17-155 is in the best interest of the town at the present time, it is resolved that the Eastline Board of Education, Board of Selectmen hereby affirmatively opts out of the provisions of Public Act 17-155.
Second.
Any questions? Any comments?
Just a comment is, I understand what the state's intent was in this, because we do have people who are starting to, over time, are going to need more care and so forth like that, and probably want to get closer to family, but I think there's a lot of flaws in this. I think it's best left to come through zoning, to where we can have some requirements as far as tying into water, sewer, septic, and so forth like that. And it would also allow other people, residents, nearby people, to have some input as well. That's all.
Agreed. We're going to get control of the situation. What lingers out there is the enforcement and the policing of how these will be used should grandma pass away and a family moves in with kids, or something like that. And then there's, you know, the question of the sewer, septic system, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think it's wise of the zoning commission to recommend to us to pull back from this and then find an appropriate response, appropriate way of, the program that we can administer and control. You've been there.
So, I'll concur. I was at the zoning commission.
Yeah.
I heard all the arguments, I heard the deliberations, and I concur. The concept isn't bad, but I would rather have local control and procedures here that we can enforce. Definitely issues with enforcement, storage of health records, proving, to prove that the person meets these qualifications can be an issue. So, I think it's best left to local control.
Great. Any other comments? Can take a vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. We'll appoint a Board of Ed Rupp to the Cable TV Advisory.
Move to appoint Mr. John Kleinhands to the Cable TV Advisory Council as the Board of Education representative, with a term to expire on June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? There's no communications, I believe. So, we'll go to ex officio reports. Mr. Cunningham.
Let's see.
I'll get out of guard, I'll start the other side. How about Mrs. Solano? We'll work from my right.
Yeah, so I had a library Board of Trustees meeting. They're starting to put their budget together. There was some concern about the book budget item. I guess it's been slashed by the Board of Finance the last few years compared to what it was. So, they're debating what to ask for in that, and they've noted that their donations have been a little lower, even though their outreach continues. So, they're a little concerned with that number. They were obviously very pleased that the state budget is not going to impact their budget, so. The only other thing is, there was discussion before about the delivery of books from other towns and stuff like that, and they're on a new program called the Line Delivery, and it's been working out very well. And apparently, our library is a net giver than a taker. More people borrow our books than residents take other books. That's all I have. I have a building commission meeting tomorrow, and the Board of, the planning commission meeting was canceled last week, so I have...
Great. Mr. Siri.
Okay. Last week, there was a Parks and Rec meeting. Basically, they ended the season up pretty well with revenues and so forth. Parks are in good shape and so forth like that. One of the things they'll be doing at their meeting next month, those will be setting the rates for next year, as far as for admission to the park, for town residents and non-residents. They are acutely aware of the parking situation that was, happened last year, so they're talking about possibly, right now, it's ten, for a town resident, walk-in pass doesn't, all you need is an ID and you can get in, there's no walk-in cost. But for now, the town person, right now, it's $10 plus three people with that person. They realize that's less expensive than going to a state park, because, so they're talking about possibly charging $10 per person for a walk-in pass, vice, one and three other people. So, but they'll be deciding that at the next meeting.
Again, they set those, we don't...
They set, we do not set the rates. I gave them my input, and they do, they have heard the concerns of the Main Street business owners, as well as people trying to park down there, so I think they're, they're going to take that into consideration.
That's it. They're going to decide that at the next meeting?
December meeting is when they set the rates.
So, I need to be at that meeting?
Yes.
Did you make sure I'm...
Yes.
There. Okay. Mr. Cunningham.
I'm ready. So, let's see. Historic Properties, they canceled their meeting this week, but Smith Harris had a meeting started about a half hour before this meeting, but I got to attend part of it, and they wanted me to be sure that I announced that on December 2nd to 12 noon, they're going to have a wreath, they'll be selling wreaths, and if someone wants to decorate with a wreath, that's a good place to get one, and we'll help out the Smith Harris house.
That's December 2nd?
December 2nd, from 9:00 to noon, they'll be selling some wreaths. And then, on the 9th, 12:09, they're going to have their open house, and that'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and they wanted me to mention that the Belshnikle will arrive at 2:00.
Yeah.
I think you'd be interested in that. No, 2:00.
Okay.
And that's about it for Smith Harris. And tomorrow night, there is a Wellsco meeting, and that'll be interesting.
That'll be an interesting one.
Yeah, and that'll be...
Finally. That's a heavyweight one tomorrow night. Good luck with that. I actually heard some things today that the meeting may not be as heavy as was, I think there's going to be some backing down on that, so you'll see.
Interesting to see where it goes.
Yeah, you'll see where that goes.
Two points of view.
So, the, thank you. Thank you for your report. So, the December 9th, which is typical around here, the Jingle Bell Run is December 9th in the morning. The Belshnikle and the Smith Harris House from 11:00 to 4:00. So, we're going to run down at, that's...
That's McCook's?
Yeah, that's McCook's, not Hole in the Wall. So, we start there, and that's for the Brian Daigle Suicide Prevention Foundation, and then we go up to Smith Harris from 11:00 to 4:00 for an open house, tours, Christmasy kind of things, Belshnikle comes in, and then the Light Parade is that evening. And so, that December 9th is a big deal in Niantic. As reported earlier this meeting, Costco, from their corporate office, has sent out a press release that they have pulled out of this project, that we know for a fact they've pulled out of Branford and Cranston, I've been told, as well. They're realigning their strategies, if you will. Project's not dead. That project has been zoned... That, 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 that project has been zoned for commercial development. At one point, we had a Target store going in there in 2008, then retail pulled out. And before that, it was a Kohl's. And that was early, early on. I'll, I'll speak more to that later. That project's not dead, the Conover Group still owns the property, and they are pursuing other anchor stores. We had a, a meeting and an introduction and a kickoff of the Miracle League field that will be built behind Flanders School. This will be a rubberized field for those kids with severe handicaps and wheelchairs, with the walking braces or crutches, with muscular dystrophy and all sorts of physical development and other development problems. There's one Miracle Field, League Field in West Hartford right now in the state of Connecticut. That group, which is becoming a national group and has, and, and has different names in other regions of the country, are, are looking to put a field in southeastern Connecticut and would like to have one in Eastline. Fundraising will happen, no tax money. This is going to be a, a big deal in our town. This will be, this will be the next boardwalk. But this will be something that fills our insides. These kids come and play on the field from around the region, bringing business, tourism to the area. Our kids, varsity baseball team comes down and helps the kids play baseball, wheels them around, scouts, youth leagues. It will be a soccer field, it will be a football field. It'll be a field to use for trick-or-trunk for holiday events and other kind of carnival fair-type events that will specifically draw in these families with these special needs. It's an honor for our town to be asked to host it. A lot of fundraising is going to have to happen throughout the region. I'm talking to the council of governments, I'm talking to all the first selectmen. This is going to be a big deal in our town, this will go behind Flanders School. There's an old backstop there. The field will be about the size of a T-ball field. Watch for video, watch for announcements of presentations. It will tug on your heart, it will put a lump in your throat when you see the video. It's going to be pretty special, and it will be the next best thing to happen to Eastline. On Veterans Day, wow, there were a number of different programs that went out on Veterans Day. I went to five or six of them, the Rotary Club had a Veterans Day program, the middle school, the high school. Of course, the town green on Veterans Day at 10:30, bitter cold. But, but, but well, well attended, and I salute the Veterans Council for putting that on. And also the Senior Center on Monday had a, had a breakfast for the veterans, very well attended. And it's a pleasure to be invited to those things. The, or, middle of last week, I had a meeting with many, many Eastline merchants. They had a merchant meeting, and I was asked to attend and update them on things that are happening in our town. And it's my pleasure, we have a lot of good small business owners in our town, and it's nice to hear their perspective of what's going on. There's just a, just a positive vibe coming, business seems to be up all over, and, and people want to be engaged and want to work with one another to promote tourism, but to also have a sense of community. I'm trying to find out, does anyone get a score, the varsity girls, they're in the semifinals.
No, I haven't, I've been trying.
I got a three to nothing. Up, not so good. We're on the, on the nothing side of the three. And they're at the semis, semifinals of the girls varsity soccer. I went to see the quarters last week, what a great team. Fundraiser for Niantic Main Street was Saturday night, that's where they raise money to actually put the flowers, it's not taxpayer money that puts the flowers in, it's not taxpayer, it's not taxpayer employees that go water those flowers, it's, it's volunteers, and they raise money by having a beer tasting. And at that beer tasting, the key to this town, the key to the city, I almost said, key to the town was given to Sue Kumro for Mermaid Liquors for all that she has done to enhance the business community down here. Yesterday, I went to the Board of Ed Long Range Plan meeting that was held at the middle school. They are really putting in the time and really sitting down and thinking about where the school system's heading and how they're going to get there. And it's all about communication, it's all about having everybody on the same page, heading in the same direction. And Jeff Newton's doing a great job at the Board of Ed, and his administrative staff is as well. I just came from an event over at Seacor Subaru where Subaru Cars of America gave the, our TVCCA, the people who put on our Meals on Wheels in our community and surrounding communities, a free Subaru for, for delivering of meals. And that's kind of a big deal, and it's all, it has a rap on it, a, you know, Meals on Wheels logo on it. And that's pretty cool. And then I came back here and hosted about a dozen Girl Scouts who are looking to do civic things, civic-minded things in our, in our, in our town. Lastly, the band show, as many people read online and in the newspaper, was vandalized with graffiti. On Saturday night, heading into Sunday morning, it was discovered, reported, and by Monday morning, it was cleaned. The, I commend the Eastline Police Department for very quickly following up on a few leads and doing some investigation and found the four culprits, who are all minors and have been arrested and will have their day in court. And, and I probably should stop there, but I, obviously, the message is out there, don't, don't mess around, the cops, the cops will find you. And, and there's also just a great love affair in this town with our facilities, our parks and our facilities in our parks. And when the news came, a lot of people were heartbroken over the damage. And literally, I got calls immediately that they would volunteer to help clean up. Yes, a lot of people, and I, myself included, think that the kids should have been cleaning it up, it needed to be done professionally, it needed to be done right. It is a town facility, and it couldn't be done by amateurs. But the, hopefully the kids will be made by the judge to pay for the cleanup. That's my report. Public comment?
I have one comment to make. I just want to say one thing, that they opened up the bridge by my house today, and both lanes are open, full bore go. Which is a rough, rough while.
Yes.
For businesses up there, I want to tell you.
Yeah, I did talk to this all post road.
Light business is off 50% from last year. Mine is off 25 to 30. But it's beautiful, they did a good job, the road is nice and smooth, they still got some work to do on the side by my place. They got a couple berries to put up, a little more blacktop, and be done. But it's smooth and running.
Good. Great, select, any other comment? Selectmen's response. Well, I've already mentioned that the revenue from this project, the project is 400,000 square feet of retail over at Costco. It's not four buildings additional, it's a mall. Four minor box stores and then lots of stores in between. That was the original concept. Again, that's before retail bottom fell out in 2008, whether the developer was going to come across and build that, I don't know. It's also, it's also slated for office space, so you never know, you get a Shaw's Cove in there, and I don't know what taxes are on that, so I can't... I, I'll, I'll talk now, okay? Our Parks and Rec supervisor was not fired, so you're getting your information wrong. He's not fired, okay? He resigned. He resigned, he did not get fired. There's some discipline that happened, and while I won't call that a liar, certainly not, but you're misinformed. And that's kind of dangerous when you come up to a microphone and say someone's name and then say that they were fired, it's probably not appropriate. Retirement plan, Mark Solerno knows what it is. I don't receive a retirement or a pension from the town. I don't receive a dime when I leave here. I don't give a, maybe 20 years or just two more years. I don't receive a dime because I didn't take the pension. So if I don't take it, I don't get it.
No kidding, I understand that, sir.
Okay. So let's, wait, I'm still talking, I get the mic, you had your chance. And, and so, so you can't say that I'm going to be vested in a pension plan when there is no pension plan for myself, nor will there be lifetime health benefits. But listen, the campaign's over, the election's over, I'm moving on, and hopefully other people will as well. I won't dignify comments about my kids, because I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't go there with your family.
Well, that's bullshit.
Okay?
You call them out in debate, you call them out all the time.
I, I, I don't, I, my kids, my kids, I won't go there, all right? All right? I won't go there with the problems your family has had. My kid had an issue, and he had to be moved from the school system, all right? One graduated and one had to go. Okay, you do things for your kids, you did the same for your kids, maybe not the same thing, but you do things for your kids, and you might move them out of a school for another reason other than the quality of education. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye.